Call the Chover Regional School Committee, meeting to order. It's March 28th and it is 6:00 PM. Are there any citizens who would like to make any comments this evening? Oh, I'm sorry. The chairperson, Lorraine Ramosco, will be participating with us remotely and may be joining us later in the meeting. Thank you, Alita, for letting, reminding me. Okay. Any citizens' comments? All right. Seeing none. Who can make the chair updates? Lorraine, do you have any updates?
The only update is that the Trad Town meeting is next Wednesday, 7 o'clock, in Lancaster. And I think everyone knows about that. I do not believe I'll be there because I'm traveling, but I think we have really good representatives specifically from Lancaster, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a student presentation, the Hale Middle School Math Club.
Are they here, ready to come?
Are they here?
Hi.
Principal Grady, how are you?
Very good.
Good.
Okay. Do you need a couple minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we can do Isabel's report.
Isabel, can we have your short report? Great, thank you.
It's pretty short this week. From athletics, the spring season is underway. Teams and coaches have been very flexible as we were rotating and practicing between the gyms and the turf field as we wait for snow to melt on our fields in Dragan. Very Massachusetts fashion. From the music department, the concert band received a bronze medal at MICA this past Friday in Hopkington. And both the concert choir and chamber choirs received silver medals this past Sunday at MICA in Northborough. Both very exciting from the music department. Florence Sawyer is kicking off Kindness Week this week, and there will be a school-wide assembly outlining the intent of some of the activities planned for the week. That was on Friday, so very exciting here. And MCAS began this week for middle and high schoolers, and it starts next week for the elementary schools.
Very good. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Principal Grady.
We're making sure their math problems are correct. Are you ready?
Sure.
My girl, let me show you guys. You've got the white paper over here.
Oh, good. That's nice.
So, here we have Rebecca Solomon and Lauren Hans. They are some of our mathletes. So, they participate in something called the Hale Math Club. The club is for students who are interested in doing more math than you would normally have in school. There's two kind of components to it. There's the National Math Club, and there's the Competition Club. For the National Math Club, they meet weekly and they work on math problems and puzzles, and it culminates in some sort of gold level project. This year, it's a math game, right?
Yes.
On the competition side, they compete in something called the Math Counts Competition. And that pits the strongest students in each region against one another, and the schools against one another in these competitions. It's middle-level math competitions. They're relatively new on the competition side, and they hope to increase their presence here in the next few years in those regional competitions. I believe they are going to challenge you guys to do some math.
Okay, nature.
So, be ready.
Awesome. Okay. Okay. But first, we're here to blow your minds with some magic. So, I don't know if you guys all have scrap paper out there, but we have, oh, sorry. Okay. I'll just, we don't really need to do anything with this yet, so it's up to you for now. Actually, we've got to get to it in this one. Okay. First, work down your age. Not to share it with anyone. Okay. Now multiply it by a fifth of 100. Okay. Now add on today's date, meaning if the 28th of the month, they'll add 28. Now multiply it by 20% of 25. Now add your shoe size.
Wait a minute. Sorry.
Right?
Maybe we shouldn't have been doing this along with them. We just spare time, right?
Now, what were we supposed to do with 20% of 25? Multiply it?
Yes. Multiply what you have by 20% of 25.
Okay.
Add your shoe size.
I knew my shoe size.
Now add your shoe size, and if it's a half number, just round up to the whole number.
My math things already starting kicking in. He's starting ventilating, so.
Don't worry, there's only one more step.
All right. So, then the shoe size.
And don't worry, there's only one more step.
All right, now.
Now subtract five times today's date, which I will give to you because 28 times 5 really wants to do that. 140.
That's a subtract?
Yes. Subtract 140, or five times today's date. Now, if we're lucky and your math skills were correct, your final answer should be, the first two numbers should be how old you are, and the second two numbers should be your shoe size.
Excellent. Close enough.
Anyone else?
I'm watching.
Good lines. Good job, Seb.
I got the first part right. I didn't get my shoe size. That was my shoe size when I was in middle school, I think, so I'm going to give myself that.
This is radical else.
Okay. And next, we're going to challenge your math skills even more.
Oh, my goodness.
This is an example of something similar to what we might have during one of our things.
Competitions.
Not the thing. One of our practices for competitions are the actual competition itself.
Okay.
So, wait. Sorry. Actually, I forgot a step. We are going to show you why that magic trick isn't really magic, and it's really just math.
Kind of the same thing. Magic, math.
What did you want to read? And I'll write if you want.
Yes, I'll read.
Okay. Translate to math. Okay. I'll do my age, 14. We'll use this book, and why not? Work down your age. 14. Now multiply it by 1/5 of 100.
Multiply 20.
Translate by 20.
Translate by 20.
Translate into math.
Oh, okay.
Different language entirely. So, 14 times 20 is 280. And today's date, so 28. Please direct me if any of these math skills are wrong. I do know that I happen to be a math club, but no, there was no additions. Now multiply that by 20% of 25.
5.
Okay. We will round to a 7. Okay. Now finally subtract five times today's date.
28 times 5.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Which we already decided was 140. Okay. Now that we have this all written out, we're just going to do some nice little algebra here. 1407. And we're just going to do some algebra to show you.
How should we do it?
Subtraction.
Oh. I thought we were adding. I was like, no.
Next, we're going to show you why this is all just algebra, and it's really just canceling each other out. So, we have written this out algebraically. It's 14 times 20% of 100, it was, right?
1/5 of 100.
1/5, 100. Sorry. Yeah. 1/5 of 100. 1/5 of 100, so, ooh, that's awkward. You can turn that off again. So, that makes it 0.2 times 100. Then, then it's add on today's date, plus 28, multiply by 20% of 25, times 0.2 times 25. And then add your shoe size. Plus 7. Now subtract five times today's date, and we decided that was 140. And here we go. We're going to cancel some stuff out, hopefully.
And all of those variables, so age, date, shoe size, those would all be represented by different variables, X, Y, Z.
So, if we replace that, it becomes 14, wait, no, that's the first one. X times 0.2 times 100, plus Y times 0.2 times 25, plus Z minus 5 times Y. Distributive property, 0.2X times 100X plus Y times 0.2 times, ooh, sorry, ask this to subject. 0.2Y times 25Y plus B minus 5Y is a close to equal. Since we had that in the hundreds, this is in, these are the thousand and hundred, so it's going to be the age times 100, which age we decided was equals X, 100X, X times 100, really don't want that there, plus Z, yeah, Z. And then if we cancel everything out here, we have 0.2X times 100X, we just make it 20X, plus 0.2Y times 20Y, 5Y, plus B minus 5Y. Now you see the Ys cancel out here, 5Y and minus 5Y cancel out, which becomes 20X plus B equals, why is it 20? Shouldn't it be 10X?
More fun.
Oh. Because, I'm so sorry. Did I miss a step? Thank you. I missed a step. I'm sorry. Thanks. Okay. Yeah. See what I did here. Better jump in, fix this for me? We were supposed to add that before multiplying. This is, yeah, not following PEMDAS, which I forgot because the order of things go. I've been, had PEMDAS drilled into my brain.
But we're supposed to be the experts.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Honestly, we have so many great clubs at Chover that I was auditioning for the Hale Play during, when I was preparing, supposed to be preparing for this.
Did you have one more problem you wanted to work on?
We did. We can skip to this, but honestly, if you see this, it just all cancels out each other if you don't make mistakes like we just did. And that's the goal.
Did you want to, you were showing them one that you were doing that kind of competition?
Yes. This is more similar to what we do in competition.
So, this is three consecutive odd integers add up to 87. Find those three integers. Now find the radius of a circle in feet where there's circumference of 1/16, the product of those integers.
And, yeah.
Round to the nearest whole number.
They very much do try to trick us up with the wording, and usually it works. No. We, sometimes.
I was thinking 7? I guess that's what we do about 7.
Yeah. Basically, we, we got two options. We can either give you time to see if you can figure this one out, or we can speed it along and show you how it should be done.
I think, I think you're going to have to speed it along, to be honest with you, because we're already running quite, quite a bit behind, so.
And I personally don't want to do the problem super.
We'll show it to you real fast here. So, basically, we have A as our odd integer. We're going to have A as our first odd integer. So, that becomes A plus, A plus 2, because between 2 and 2, so it's 2. Yeah. With math. A plus 4, which can then be simplified into 3A plus 6. And we know that this is equal to 87. Now, if you subtract 6 like you would when you're simplifying an equation, you get 3A equals 81. Then you divide each by 3 to get A alone, A equals 27. Now, that makes it, if 27 is A, then the two other odd integers that come up through that are 27, 29, and 31. So, the problem says that the radius of a circle in feet is circumference, with 1/16 being the product of those integers. So, first, we're going to find the product of these numbers. 27 times 29 times 31, do that on the calculator because I'm not great at fast math. Well, I could, but it, we're running behind anyway, so.
24,573.
Makes it 25,273. Now, if we want to find 1/16 of that, we'll divide it by 16, which makes it, which makes it rounded to the nearest whole number.
1,517.
Nice. So, that's 1/16 of it, and now it's asking us to find the radius of the circle. Does anyone remember how to do that? I mean, that was a rhetorical question. Yeah. No, she's like, pi, correct. So, we're going to divide it by pi.
There's a pi.
Which makes it 483. And then we're going to divide by 2 to get the radius, because this is the diameter right now, which makes it 241 point, oh, we're running into a head-to-head number, so 242, which would be our final answer if we were on a test or practice test.
Wow. That's, that's really incredible, ladies.
I'm very sorry that we ran over.
That's okay.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, I'd like to know, what's your favorite part about this club?
I really like it because you kind of get involved in a community, which is like a lot of clubs, but also you get to practice math skills that you wouldn't necessarily get to do in like your normal math class.
Yeah. She's very. We'll be in math class, and then the teacher will be like, does anybody know how to do this? I'll be like, I do. And it's pretty cool.
And the people there are honestly really fun to be with.
Yeah. And Mr. Mel Warren is amazing.
It's true.
Mr. Mel Warren, please stand up so we can, thank you. You're the advisor to the math class?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Neil, did you have a question?
I did. I had a quick question. Does anyone here want to be a teacher or engineer?
I'm, I consider me a teacher.
I've been told, based on the way I think that engineering might be a good profession for me, but I've not quite considered it exactly, but I am doing a course next year called Basics with Engineering, rather than just physics, which, because I like the idea of doing engineering with that.
Other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. It's what you're doing, I mean, I've got a headache just watching this, but what you're doing, and I know that when you run into a mistake, it's, it can feel uncomfortable and embarrassing, but you're really modeling good math thinking. And when you saw you made a mistake and you couldn't quite get it, you turned to one of your colleagues to say, can you take a look at this? Can you fix that? And that's really as important to understanding and doing math as getting correct answers. I'd rather see a student who can look at something and try to figure out, work with others to figure out what went wrong, than to give all the correct answers. So, good work. And is this the club that we approved at the beginning of the year? Was this?
This has been a club that's been here for a while.
This is, we would have to go back to this step to resolve the problem, and because of what time we just.
No, that's, but you knew what you had to do. And if you didn't know, you turned to your colleagues, which is great, so.
I think you modeled beautifully. You really did. Like, I have to say, I would agree. I just thought that you were, you handled it so appropriately. It was fascinating to watch you work it through. Really. Great job.
Thank you.
My stuff is really boring now. That was exciting.
Don't be so proud of yourself. All right. We will, to the superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. Four items to just basically report out on. Your report has just a comment or two, and I just want to expand on each one of these. Ongoing safety efforts that we continue to work away on. Want to do a special thanks out to our nurse leader, Lisa Gilbicki, our police representatives, our school safety committees, and the emergency task force team members for meeting on Monday for our first safety summit meeting. We brought all of our groups in. We had a plan. We knew some things that we needed to work on as a collective group and as individual communities. And with our police helping to guide us with that effort on Monday, I think we made some great headways, so I'm really, really pleased with what was accomplished at our very first safety summit meeting. I don't think that that will be the only one. We'll continue to work away as we come up against things and want to refine some processes. But for the first one, it was very, very good. The second one, kind of a springboard from that, the police chiefs. A note of thanks is also extend to our police departments for a meeting that we held in this room last Friday. We met with our nurse leader again, Lisa Gilbicki, our interim director of facilities, Rob Frieswick, our interim director of business and operations, Pat Maroni, our director of IT, Suji, and myself. And we reviewed and mapped out additional building and technology strategies to strengthen our current safety infrastructure. With the police guiding, they led us, they supported the efforts, and we've put some immediate measures in place that were not previously in place. So, I'm really grateful to everybody who was sitting around this table that day. Lots of really good things generated. I felt very, very pleased with the outcome of that particular meeting. It was most of the afternoon Friday, and it was just tremendous. Fincom meetings. I just want to report out, we've, we've been asked to attend two Fincom meetings, and I know that we attended the Stowe meeting. Mark Jones and I both attended that, the Stowe Fincom. And that was excellent. That was long. That was about two and a quarter hours long. It was great. They had just terrific questions, and I really appreciated both the Stowe and Bolton Fincoms. I thought that they really had a clear understanding of our process and had a good grasp of the budget in general, so really appreciate that. So, thanks to both of those, those groups for asking us to join them. Student activities, this is just a final thing I wanted to put out there. You know, our district is so busy, and I think our kids just do such amazing things. And I was thinking, I know Isabel, you'd reported out last time about the game that the girls lost by one point.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were there that night, but what, what a game. Oh, my goodness. Our girls, I think, were ahead throughout the whole game until like the last, what, two minutes?
I was, so I was at EMT class last night, but trust me, we were looking at score updates all the time, and it was so heartbreaking. That lasts 16 seconds.
It was, it was heartbreaking. What so impressed me that night, though, and it was the same thing that I see time and again, whether it's at our concerts or the King &amp; I production, you know, the professionalism, the grit, the determination that our children put out time and again. It's just so impressive what our students are able to accomplish. And coupled with that, I think, is the support that our communities bring forward. And I know Mr. Grady has commented on this, and so has Mr. Dida Minico. So, both brand-new principals into our communities, and they have both commented to me on several occasions, we have such great parents to deal with. So, it's not just the kids and all that we're seeing with that, but we're seeing such tremendous parent support and partnership. And so, I just, I wanted to acknowledge that night, tonight, and just say, this just continues to be an amazing district. Great kids, great parent support, great community. So, just wanted to put that, put that out there. And that's it for my superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any questions for superintendent of the report?
The, the meeting that you had with the police chiefs, was that the one that Steve's involved in? Is that the emergency response? Or is it something totally different?
No, totally different. This was just police, a police representation. Very often, we will reflect, especially after a Parkland situation, we will individually reflect on our own practices and say, are there some things that we need to do better? Are there some things we need to reflect on? Are there some things that they know about that the public wouldn't know about that we need to talk about? And it was that type of a meeting that we had, so it was primarily with the police. It was just a group of the police and our own staff at that point in time.
Thank you. Mark.
Question on the budget book. Will the school committee or some members have an opportunity to improve budget book draft as it comes forth?
I'm not sure how you'd like to deal with that, and our chairman may want to weigh in on that. We'll, we'll have the draft ready for, on Friday, which we're substantially ahead of last year at this time. So, I'm not sure, Chairman Ramosco, I probably would leave this to you, whether you'd like some additional eyes on it before we send it to print, rather than just, just the leadership.
On the budget book?
Yes.
Has the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee taken a look at it?
No. They've, they've offered input on it, but they haven't looked at the final draft. So, it would make sense to me that that might be the next, the next route to have them take a look at it.
And I, yes, I would, I would think that there isn't much that's substantially different than last year, except for a couple of areas where the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee made some recommendations.
That's exactly correct. Yeah. That's true.
Budget and Warrant, are you comfortable with just doing a cursory review?
At our meeting next week? Is it, were you talking about at a B&amp;W meeting?
Yeah. Well, well, you can review it before and then.
Yes. We'd love, we'd love to take a quick peek at it.
Yeah. So, I think that would be a great idea.
Okay. That sounds great.
Thank you.
And we'll send it out to the B&amp;W before, before their meeting time, so they have time to take a look at it.
Anything else for superintendent? Okay. Thank you. Okay. FY '18 budget review.
I do not have a report out for the month of March yet because it hasn't ended yet, but I, I will be reporting out on revolving funds in addition to the normal expenditure report and a revenue report out and projections as to what we should have coming till the end of the year. I just wanted to give you an update on a meeting that I attended with Masbo at the trade show, and the state auditor bump was at that meeting, and she gave us some insight into the regional transportation reimbursement. There's a true effort to have that amount increased. I'm hoping that they give us an increase this year. In the past, it's been about 74% of our mile and a half or more students transported by the district, and we're hoping that we'll have an increase for this year and for next year as well. She's indicated that it would be part of a step up, like we'd start a little bit this year, a little bit more next year, until we get up to the 400%. And so, we're keeping our fingers crossed in that respect. I'd like you to know also that we've instituted a budget freeze. And when I say a freeze, if there's something that's essential, that doesn't mean that, you know, a school couldn't have it. They're not going to leave them without supplies if they run out of something for a classroom. It's just that.
half out, get it, get reimbursed, 74 now. But the children that we pick up from a mile and a half in, what Lynn is asking, is that in a Shova policy to pick up those kids within the mile and a half, or is it a state mandate that we pick up all the children along the way?
That, I'm not sure if it's mandated that we pick them up. We were a rural district.
It's difficult to ask children to walk on, you know, streets without sidewalks.
No, no, I get that, but I don't understand why there would be a mile and a half limit. Because I thought that we went regional. It was 100%.
I don't believe so.
100% of kids transported a mile and a half is what it was supposed to be. And again, it's unfunded. It isn't funded at 100% really.
So, is that like related to a statute for school transportation?
It must be.
Can you get that information and react to us?
Sure, I can get that for you.
That would be great. Okay. We'll get that information. Thank you. Any other questions for Pat? Mark?
So, just to clarify, so when you say budget freeze, what you basically are saying, that there's an opportunity for the administration to review all significant purchases for review before they get spent in the last couple months of the year.
Right.
That's what you mean by budget freeze, right?
Right. We look at a lot of different things. Like, we question, you know, why wasn't this purchased earlier in the year? Why all of a sudden you're buying this at the end of the year? You know, we don't want stockpiling of supplies, knowing, you know, it just doesn't make sense to do things.
Right. So, what you're attempting to do is prevent the, oh, we have money in our fund, let's spend it now before it goes away.
Exactly.
And therefore, the administration reviewing all purchases so that this kind of spending does not occur. Right?
That's a piece of it. But the other piece is that it provides, like last year, when we did it, it provided a very smooth year end for us because everything was done in a timely fashion, and you didn't have stuff coming in in September or October that should have come in in like July. So, it really helps out for the budget-keeping component of it as well. So, everything is done timely.
And we gave them a couple of days to make sure that...
They knew.
They knew enough to look and say...
Do you want me to do the endowment fund gift?
Sure.
While you're here, while you're here.
The Shova Regional High School Endowment Fund has, again, made a donation on behalf of the students at the high school in the amounts of $567, $266, and $500, all for kitchen supplies, immersion game, and senior projects. For those of you that don't know what the endowment fund, this is a fund of volunteers that they raise money to buy additional supplies for the students, that they... things that may not be included in our normal appropriation. And they submit a request, and they're approved or denied. So...
And they just operate with the high school? They just operate within the high school?
Yes, at the high school.
Okay. Would someone make a motion to accept the donation?
I move that the school district accept the donations from the Shova Regional High School Endowment Fund in the amount of, let's see, what's the total? Actually, we don't have a total.
Okay.
Three items, $567.15, $266.93, and $500. And for the opportunity to receive these funds.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Lorraine, I forget that you're here. All right, roll call vote, because we have a member participating remotely. Ms. Ramosco?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Lynn?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Mark? I met Mark. Yeah, Neil. Hello, Neil.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. These passes. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if you're going to go onto the Melanson Heath component, Pat might want to stay there to do the appropriate introduction.
Very good. Okay.
We have today Cheryl Stevens Burke from Melanson Heath, and she's just finished our financial audit. And she has some things to tell us. All right.
Cheryl, how are you?
Very well. You?
Good. We're doing great. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Just wanted to point out that we are, this is the first year of our audit with you, one of the partners at Melanson Heath. Our firm specializes in audits governmental entities. Just wanted to also thank Pat and her staff for the assistance provided during the audit process. We are, we do tend to monopolize your time, and there is a lot of documentation that's pulled, and we really appreciate the assistance. I understand that you have a draft of the audited financial statement and the governance letter. Do you all have that? I can walk you through it if you have it, and just point out some of the highlights and answer any questions that you might have along the way. So, I'm going to start with the annual financial statements. And I'm actually going to, a couple pages in beyond the table of contents, is a report titled "The Independent Auditor's Report." And it's very important that I point this out because that's why you're hiring an audit firm, because of these few first pages in the financial statements. On page two, in the middle of the page, it is, you'll see an opinion paragraph. And this is specifically why you are hiring the auditors, to give an opinion on your financial statements. This paragraph is giving what they call a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It says that you believe your financial statements are materially fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and those are the guidelines for financial reporting. Pages that follow the independent auditor's report, and I'm not going to go through them unless you have specific questions. So, pages four through 10 of your financial statements are what is called the management's discussion and analysis section. And in governmental financial statements, it is required supplementary information. So, it gives an overview about your financial statements and what has happened during the year. On page 11 of your financial statements, this is where the numbers pages of the financial statements start. And there's a couple of different ways of looking at financial information for governmental entities. And this is what I call the first set of financial statements, the statement net position. It's one column of financial information that's titled governmental activities. It is all of your governmental funds, so your general fund, your special, what they call special revenue funds, and that includes your grants and revolving funds, all reported into one column of the financial statements. This is a little bit of an alarming page to be the first one in a financial statement. And I say that because if you look at the very bottom of the page, the total net position is in a negative of $21,355,047. So, the accounting standards, they put this page right out there in the front, but I always want to make sure that everyone understands that, even though it's very alarming to open up and look at this, that it's not unusual. And the reason it's not unusual is because of some recent accounting standards that have been required to be implemented. Specific, something specifically, something called GASB 68, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 68. What that is, is the unfunded liability, or your proportionate share of the unfunded liability that relates to the Worcester County Regional Retirement System. So, all governmental entities, schools, towns, counties, are required to put their proportionate share on this page in financials. And that number, if you look up a few numbers, it's called the net pension liability. It's $13,258,496. So, that's one of the drivers of the negative number down at the bottom of the page. The other driver of the negative number is the one that's right above the net pension liability, and that's the net OPEB obligation, Other Post-Employment Benefits. And that relates to the unfunded liability that is a result of allowing your retirees to participate in your health insurance program. So, a couple of things to note. These are not new liabilities. The accounting standards are just new. So, they've always been out there, but now they're just being reported on this page in the financial statements. The other thing to keep in mind is, sometimes I get asked the question, do we have to fund this? And the answer is no. So, that's very reassuring for some people. This presentation of the financial statements is what is called a long-term perspective. It's on a accrual basis of accounting. So, in addition to the net pension liability, which is long-term, OPEB, there's also long-term assets. If you see up at the top of the page, you see land and capital assets net of accumulated depreciation. What the GASB is trying to do is trying to get every possible long-term asset, short-term asset, long-term liability on this page in the financial statements. The primary users of this page in the financial statements are not typically management or the school committee. Typically, it's the bond rating agencies that are looking at this page. So, any questions on that? Just a little bit of background on governmental accounting.
Sure. On OPEB, I believe the actuary has reported a number in the vicinity of $40 million, and your balance sheet shows $28 million. Can you describe the difference between that $40 million liability and the actuary's liability report?
Excellent question. The GASB has a new statement that's required to be put on this page of the financial statements next year in fiscal 2018. It's called GASB 75. And what you're talking about is, there's only a piece of the liability for the OPEB obligation that's sitting on this page, and that's the $28,745. There's a much bigger liability out there. The current standards used to prepare these financial statements, thank you. The current standards used to prepare these financial statements, the requirement is to only put an incremental amount of the liability on this page every year. The new requirement is going to drive this negative number even farther into the red because of what this gentleman has made note of, that there's a much bigger liability out there.
So, you're saying next year, this fuller amount will be arriving on the balance sheet?
Yes.
Somewhere in the vicinity of 40, more or less million dollars.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but you've hired an actuary to calculate what the number is, and that gets done every two years. And that's where the information comes to put that on.
And similarly, for the pension liability that's shown, can you describe why that's on our liability balance sheet as distinct from the funds that we already are paying to the Worcester County Pension Fund?
I'll do my best on it. It's very complicated. And if you've read the financial statements, especially the footnote disclosure, you can see that the disclosures for that pension liability and OPEB obligation have really consumed the footnote disclosure. So, there's a lot of information that's pulled out of those reports. The net pension liability, you're participant in the retirement system. What you're paying every year is really a pay-as-you-go number. There's promises out there to retirees. And the, basically, if I'm not making sense, just let me know, the assets that are out there in the retirement system are not enough to cover the promised payments to the retirees. And so, there's a gap or a liability out there. It's unfunded. And so, what the report does, that we use to go to put on this financial statements, it's taking your proportionate share of that liability and putting it on there. So, if you look at the retirement systems' financial statements, you can see the total liability and how they allocate it out to all the participating employers or school districts and towns and so forth.
So, is it a correct understanding that the actual amount we are paying to the Worcester County Pension Fund is inadequate compared to what we actually owe to our retirees and our current employees? Is that correct? And that's why we show a liability on our balance sheet?
Correct.
Go. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Lynn, continue?
Okay. The next page, page 12. So, this is really the income statement, again, long-term perspective. You got a lot of things that aren't familiar to you. When I say that, you know, they're not things that are going through your budget. On page 12, this is the statement of activities. It is intended to present financial information on what they call a functional basis. If you look going down the left-hand side of the page, you have the functional categories of the district, followed on going to the right of the expenses. And then, further to the right, you see offsetting revenues coming to a net figure. And then, most of your revenues are what we call below the line, in that general revenue section. So, your assessments to your members, your transportation, and your state funding falls in that grants and contributions line, 7995701. Change in net position is the third line up in the bottom. It's a negative $4,000,008,381, primarily as a result of the changes or the increases in the net pension liability and the net OPEB obligation. So, again, these two pages not really used for management, but mostly for bond rating agencies. The pages that are more commonly used by management and school committees are starting on page 13. This is what is called a fund-based presentation of financial information. There's three columns that you see, the general fund, your circuit breaker, fund, and your non-major governmental funds. The standards require that what they call major funds be shown as separate columns on the financial statements. So, the general fund is always a major fund. This year, circuit breaker, because of the high dollar amount that's in that fund at this point in time, is required to be reported separately as a major fund. And then, everything else is categorized as non-major. So, that all the other remaining grants and revolving funds are in that column. The most important section typically of the balance sheet is in the fund balance section down at the bottom of the page, and specifically in the general fund column. So, you'll see that you have five possible categories of fund balance, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Non-spendable at $32,985 relates to resources that can be, they're basically exactly what it says, non-spendable. You can't use them to pay anything. The committed fund balance of $150,000 represents your OPEB reserve that was voted a few years ago, followed by the assigned fund balance, $1,348,508. $1 million of that is what you have voted to use in a subsequent year budget, and the remaining $348,508 is encumbrances. And then, the remaining balance is the unassigned fund balance, $1,485,332. In Massachusetts, this is kind of what you call is your E and D balance. It's 2.5% of your budget. As most of you may know, there's a limitation in Massachusetts of unassigned fund balance of 5%. So, you're falling in about the middle of that, and it's gone down a little bit, $255,000 from the prior year. Questions?
So, just to highlight for other members of the school committee. So, basically, this page, on page 13, says that our E and D excess and efficiency fund at the end of the year in 2017 was $1.4 million, more or less.
More or less. It's really the starting point. Then, they ding you for things like deficit fund balances, and you have a little bit of that going on, but not too much. It's a good starting point.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Mark? Not Neil?
So, two things. And then, to piggyback off what Mark said, subtract out $800,000 for the existing budget, and we'll be looking at E and D in the $600,000 range. And then, minus any other things that are going to tap into E and D between now and the start of the next school year, we may be looking at a lower balance than the 600, if I understand everything correctly. The circuit breaker, do you actually, can you give an explanation for that, or is that something that Pat should be given an explanation just for, like, because this is a different line that isn't always carried here? Maybe we should explain it publicly what that is?
So, you have not seen circuit breaker shown as a major fund in the past, kind of standing out there?
I don't recall that. You remember that, Mark? I don't know.
From a reporting standpoint, it is, it probably has been in the past, including your non-major governmental funds. But because the fund balance is so high, and it's a calculation that this accounting standard... Questions?
So, just to highlight for other members of the school committee, so basically, this page on page thirteen says that our E and D excess and deficiency fund at the end of the year in 2017 was one-point-four million dollars, more or less.
More or less. It's really the starting point. Then they ding you for things like deficit fund balances, and you have a little bit of that going on, but not too much. It's a good starting point.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Mark, not Neil?
So, two things, and then to piggyback off what Mark said, subtract out eight hundred thousand dollars for the existing budget, and we'll be looking at E and D in the six-hundred thousand dollar range, and then minus any other things that are going to tap into E and D between now and the start of the next school year, we may be looking at a lower balance than the six-hundred, if I understand everything correctly. The circuit breaker, do you actually, can you give an explanation for that, or is that something that Pat should be given an explanation just for, like, because this is a different line that isn't always carried here? Maybe we should explain it publicly what that is?
So, you have not seen circuit breaker shown as a major fund in the past, kind of standing out there?
I don't recall that. You remember that, Mark? I don't know.
From a reporting standpoint, it is, it probably has been in the past, including in your non-major governmental funds, but because the fund balance is so high, and it's a calculation that this accounting standards have made you do, but it qualifies as a major fund. And so, it's kind of pulling your attention, and that's why they want to show it as a major fund.
And Pat, the circuit breaker is, if you'd explain why we receive the circuit breaker monies?
It's directly related to our out-of-district tuition costs.
So, if the costs exceed a certain point within the district, we get relief that comes in the form of circuit breaker?
Well, it's really complex. There's a lot of paperwork involved. It has to do with the number of students served in the district and, you know, what we get for funding from outside agencies and everything else.
And there's an expectation that there's a foundational piece at the very beginning, the school district has to pay a certain amount, and then it's a percentage above. It is complicated. You might be able to explain it much easier than we can, but is that a simplistic way of saying it?
I think so. I think that's a good way to explain it.
It's outside monies coming into the districts to offer relief for some of the costs.
Right, a percentage of it. And that percentage varies over time. I mean, we've had, I want to say in 2008, it was down like around forty-eight or forty-seven, somewhere, something that percent, and then sometimes as high as like seventy-two. It varies from year to year.
Right, and that's where I'm going with that, is that that can actually fluctuate drastically while we're getting the circuit breaker.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Then, did I hear you correctly, do we actually pay money towards circuit breaker?
No, we don't pay money towards circuit breaker. It's just that you pay, so if you've got an out-of-district student, I don't know, maybe the, let's, for sake of an argument, it's a hundred thousand dollar placement, that a percentage of that is expected that the school district must pay, and so, whatever that percentage is, whatever that foundation number is, it's the number between there and the top, that a percentage of that comes back into the district. Is that a good way of explaining it?
Yeah, I think so. Other highlights of the financial statements, and tell me if I'm talking too long, on page fifteen. So, this is the income statement. Again, you have the three columns that are required by the presentation standard, general fund, circuit breaker, and the non-major governmental fund. At the bottom of the page, the third line up from the bottom, the change in fund balance, that is really the net income or the net loss for the year. You'll see in the other financing sources and uses section, you'll see transfers in and out, two-hundred sixty-five thousand going from the non-major governmental funds to the general fund. That is a practice that you have been doing in the past, is budgeting transfers from other funds to your general fund, and that was one of the recommendations from the forensic services report. My sole understanding is that is going to be discontinued going forward, so that's just kind of an update on that recommendation. The next key page in the financial statements is the budget versus actual page for the general fund, and that's on page seventeen. So, you see on the far right-hand side the variance column, and that is the comparison of the final budget to the actual amounts on the budgetary basis of accounting. So, the very far right bottom number, seven seventy-seven, three seventy-one, is a net positive number for the year. It's comprised of a net positive number up above, three twenty-nine, seven sixty-eight, indicating that you received more than you budgeted on the revenue side, and then four forty-seven, six oh three, indicating that you underspent your appropriations by that dollar amount. Again, pointing out up at the top section, you see those transfers, those budgeted transfers from athletic fund and from extended day that will be discontinued in the future.
So, part of what you're saying with this page is that this is the net surplus that was, fell into the excess and deficiency fund at the end of the year, fiscal year seventeen. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, if I can ask, Pat, the things that were recommended from the forensic audit, those are to take effect for FY nineteen? Is that the?
For eighteen.
Oh, this is seventeen, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I got it. Thank you. And I'll speak to those in a minute, because I know that's very important, that you understand.
So, the four forty-seven that fell into E and D, that's represented by the one-point-four in E and D?
It's part of that number. Okay. Page eighteen, you have the statement of budgetary deposition, agency funds, two-hundred ninety-one thousand, four ninety-six. That represents the balance as of the end of fiscal year of the student activity fund And then, beginning on page twenty are the notes to the financial statements that are required in governmental reporting, and as I had mentioned earlier, really, a couple of those new Gaspies, sixty-eight and forty-five, OPEB and net pension, they really consume the footnote disclosure. Are there any specific questions on the footnote disclosures?
Sure, I have a question.
Excuse me, Mark. Excuse me. Please wait to be recognized. So...
I recognize now?
Well, did you put your hand up like everybody else? Mr. Jones?
Yes. So, when can we anticipate that the full amount of the OPEB liability will arrive on our balance sheet?
Fiscal twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I understand that you've also received the governance letter. That is a separate communication from the auditor to those charged with governance, and that being the school committee. We, as part of our audit process, not only are auditing the numbers in the financial that we just went over, but as part of the financial statement audit, we're required to review the design and operation of some of your internal controls, and as a result of that, a lot of times, recommendations fall out. We're not issuing a separate management letter document, but we are communicating the recommendations in this governance letter. And so, a couple pages in on the governance letter, starting on page five, about the middle of the page, is a description of the recommendations that are required to be reported under the auditing standards to those charged with governance. Improved controls over the year and financial close and reporting, improving controls over dispersments, and then improving controls over receipts. And I did spend some time speaking with Pat and also the audit manager. We've gone through this and talked about ways to address the recommendations going forward. So, any questions about the recommendations, the discoveries, and the management letter?
So, these are recommendations from the forensic audit?
From the financial statement audit. And I'll speak to where we are, what we did to follow up on the forensic audit, but this is a result of your fiscal seventeen financial statement audit, and these are a little bit different. So, the things, Pat, that are mentioned in this from FY seventeen are being addressed currently?
Yes, they are. Actually, most of these things, we've gone back and corrected them all, and going forward, we're doing as noted.
Okay.
So, to be clear, it looks like, as I'm looking at some of these, because I have not seen this document yet, that many of these things are part of the corrective action plan that we came up with last year, and the Drenoff identified and addressed a lot of the issues. So, just to reiterate, this is stuff that, many of the things that you're already on top of. And you guys, when you did this audit, you were working off of the previous fiscal year's practices, is that correct? Or is that current practice that's still in existence?
This is related to activity for fiscal twenty seventeen only, so this would be a report on what was happening during that year.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Lorraine?
You still there?
Lorraine?
She mentioned the possibility of muting.
No, I think she's just muted her area. So, we're not hearing the sounds where she is.
That's what I mean. So, maybe that's why.
Yeah, so, well, I know that she had some questions, but let's just keep going, and we shall tune back in at the end. Okay. So, the other deliverables as part of our engagement, you have the audit financials, the governance letter, including the, what they call the management letter recommendations. There's also going to be a separate report that's referred to as the single audit report, and that's our report on your compliance with the federal requirements. Used to be called an A-133 report. It's now called something Uniform Guidance. About a week and a half ago, our team was out here completing that. We are required to look at all of your federal programs. The federal guidelines have a very complex calculation that auditors use to determine which federal programs get looked at. This year, your IDEA grant was the one that we reviewed, so that will be coming shortly. The end-of-year report, it's not an audit report, but it's what they call an agreed-upon procedures engagement. There are specific guidelines and steps from the state of Massachusetts that are required to be performed related to the end-of-year report, and we've performed that work too, and so that report will be coming. And then, the last report is another agreed-upon procedures report related to student activity funds and your compliance with the state's requirements in that area. And we've done the work on all of that, and we should be very close to be getting draft reports out for those. My last thing that I wanted to mention has to do with the status of the forensic services recommendations from December twenty sixteen. As part of our audit, Pat provided a nice, very well-organized spreadsheet numbering each one of the recommendations and indicating the status of those. In summary, basically, everything has been or will be addressed. Some of the things couldn't be addressed until fiscal eighteen, and some could be addressed right away. But from looking at your response and what we saw during the financial statement audit, it appears that all of those recommendations have been at least worked on. Have you shared that with us?
I believe that was the same document that was brought forward at the end of last year.
Oh, last year. I apologize. Okay. Lorraine? Any other questions? Yeah, is she, do we know that she's tuned in?
There's a green light.
The light, only when she talks.
She must have disconnected herself.
Did she disconnect? Can we connect?
Only if we call her.
Can you do that? I just don't want, I want to make sure that she has an opportunity to...
So, just can I offer a sidebar, sidebar comments?
Yes, Neil.
So, I really, I appreciate you guys, so I like the element that you put in there of basically the mechanics of what we need to be doing better. I love that, and I hope that continues forever. The thing I hate, and I know it's not you guys, but they made this more confusing. So, it's hard for someone like, just an individual, the general public to just pick this up and understand what in the heck is going on.
It's very...
Because of the whole way that they wove OPEB and everything else into this.
Yeah, and what I would do, as a representative on this school committee, sometimes you probably get asked questions about the financial statements.
That's just what I...
And really, yes, those first two pages are very confusing. I would, I almost wish they put the fund basis first, because that's so much more understandable. You know, that's where I direct people to.
So, I guess my question for you would be, is this a standardized report that the state mandates, or is this something that you can tweak?
Um, excuse me, just, Lorraine?
Yeah?
Hi. We were trying to see if you had any questions. Neil is following up with a question. Are you ready to ask your questions when he finishes?
Sure. I have to admit that the line went out for a bit, so if I ask a question that's already been asked, just tell me, and I can follow up after the meeting. I don't want to take up extra time.
Okay, so you, Neil, why don't you finish, and then Lorraine, you're up.
I think I kind of did. This is something that you can't tweak?
This is something that it always can be tweaked, but you wouldn't get a clean audit opinion, because we're reporting on, when I had made, in accordance with generally-accepted accounting principles, and those are the rules, and so that's what we're reporting on. And so, if you were to report it differently, it wouldn't be in compliance, and you wouldn't get a clean, unfortunately. So, we're going to blame GASP.
I just want to say, Brooke, I just want to second exactly what Neil's saying. I think it's so confusing, and if you really don't understand this business, it's like shock and awe, and if you don't understand really how OPEB, I mean, I think this particular school committee has put a real light, shone a real light on OPEB in the last year and a half. But if you haven't been following that and you don't understand that, it's very disconcerting if you were just to look at that page and not understand.
Absolutely. I always mention that, you know, to try, especially when, you know, it's a public session, and people are reading it and they're looking at it, to make sure that they understand that this does not mean that your district is in jeopardy or anything like that.
But you know, the John Q. Public, I think, generally would just look at that and say, "Oh, my goodness," and just simply not understand. I'm very respectful of the approach that you took with this tonight to explain it upfront so that we clearly understood, so thank you for that. I think, Pat, you deserve, you and your office deserve just so much, so much kudos and so much congratulations, when I know how much work has been done linked to the forensic audit and to get us even to this place and moving it forward. I think that there's a real sense of confidence in the work that's being addressed right now, and I just, I thank you and your office for lots and lots of good work.
Okay. All right, Lorraine, you're up.
So, my first question is, and I apologize because I don't know our guest's name.
Cheryl.
Cheryl?
Cheryl, Cheryl.
Cheryl, hi, Cheryl. My question is, and I don't have it in front of me, because all I have in front of me is, it looks like the management letter. Is there language that you could provide, or have you provided, that would help position in everyday terms what Superintendent Clancy just mentioned, as far as the perspective on how to describe?
A couple of times, especially when GASP sixty-eight first came out, and people didn't understand it, you know, it's been around for a couple of years, we've had clients kind of, you know, they put their audit report up on the website or something like that, or handing it out. They actually wrote kind of a introductory letter to try to explain it, just a one-pager to the readers of the financial statements, explaining the significance of sixty-eight and forty-five, soon to be seventy-five, even, you know, to be read even before you open up the financial statement. That's kind of what I've seen a couple of clients do that.
Do you have access to a template letter?
Yeah, I can provide you one.
Could, Pat, could you follow up and get those, please?
Sure.
I think it's really important, and I think Neil might have mentioned it, but I think it's really important for people to understand what they're looking at, because if you don't understand the complexities of it, and we're all trying to wrap our heads around it, there's no way that, you know, our fellow residents are going to get it. So, that would be, and I think that that's going to be really critical. It should also be something we consider, maybe spinning it back and putting something in the budget book, including something in the budget book, because the OPEB liability is going to have a huge impact on the budget book, or on the budget itself, so it should be included in the budget book. Okay, so, thank you for that. I'm looking at the letter, and, and again, I couldn't hear everything because the phone went dead, but it's recognized that Pat and her staff have done an incredible amount of heavy lifting over the past two years, let alone the past year. My question is, in the letter, and certainly, there are always things that we could be doing better, and I think that continuous improvement is where the district is at and why it performs well, and it's included, perform well, but there are a couple of sections that are, and again, I don't know if this came up earlier, but it looks to me like the vendor's dispersment and the payroll dispersment are an area of immediate need, unless I didn't read that correctly. And do we need to build a corrective action plan for it?
This is Cheryl. With respect to your question, I would say that, I know Pat, we've talked with Pat on ways to address this pretty quickly, and I would suggest that that happened specifically because a couple of these recommendations are what they call significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and they do need to go into your federal compliance report, your single audit report. single audit report, and would require a corrective action plan. So you have to, there's four points that you need to make, and you scroll on your letter heading, it gets filed with Federal Audit Clearing House. So, um, you know, we agree or disagree, this is what we're going to do, this is when we plan to implement, and this is who's responsible, so that's basically what needs to... So when we talked earlier, this references, um, the FY '17 budget, and maybe you were offline when we said this?
Oh, wow.
That I asked the question about, um, to what extent have these been addressed for FY '18, specifically, these, um, items, the, um, the material weaknesses and the significant discrepancies, specific to what Lorraine just mentioned, were issues in FY ' '17? Have they been addressed in the FY '18 budget?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
Ah, wonderful, thank you. I did not, I got nervous because I thought, this isn't making sense, and so, thank you very much. Pat?
It's stuff that was in the corrective action.
Totally, totally trusting you right now, girl.
Okay, uh, Lorraine, other questions?
No, thank you.
Um, Cheryl, do you have anything else that you would like to... No, no, just again, thank you so much. I mean, really, the, the audit, it, it's a, it's a big, it's a big project, and I appreciate the help. Any other questions from the committee? Lynn?
Is there anything in here, because there's a lot in here, is there anything that we should be concerned about, aside from OPEB?
Um, with respect to your, your financial position?
Yes.
Um, really, the, the answer there is no. You need, one of the key factors for management is that unassigned fund balance, you get, you're at about two and a half percent, which is about middle of the road for, for a school district. I probably would recommend not going lower than that. I mean, it's important to, to, to make sure that you have a buffer in case there's some catch-all problems.
And that's, that's the end D you're talking about?
Correct, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, Cheryl, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And thank you, Pat, for the work you've done to help us get on track with all of this. Thank you. Okay, um, we're moving on to new business, uh, actually, old business, uh, the statement of interest, Brooke.
Absolutely. So I, I know that you've seen this document now for a couple of weeks, it's been out there floating and, and asking if there's anything else that you'd like to, to make suggestions on or whatnot, so I just want to kind of talk through the, the process that I took, um, with this, and, and so you have a flavor. We had multiple communications with MSBA, um, throughout. Sometimes if you offered some suggestions, I would take some of those suggestions back to MSBA and say, is this something I should do? Is it necessary or unnecessary? Should I put it in? Should I not put it in? And if it wasn't put in here, generally, it was very specifically because MSBA said, it's not necessary, we know this, we know the dates, we understand the systems, it, not necessary to do that. Um, I want to thank those people who helped, uh, along the way, outside of the school committee, certainly, Rob Frieswick was huge in, in terms of his support with this. Pat, of course, um, had to do some research for us to, to help pull this together. Um, Joan DeAngelis, um, offered a, a couple of points along the way. Certainly, Tanya Rich also offered some, uh, support and, and some good ideas. Um, the, the other person I had reached out to was Bob Zakansky, just to say, is there anything that you would offer in terms of wanting to make sure that the task force that had worked for, what, a full year, I guess, before this even came through to fruition? Is there anything that you would offer that you, you think might or should find its way here? So it was kind of all of that coming together and then kind of drafting it, taking a look, um, and then I'd shipped out kind of a draft to the school committee, and several of you had offered some suggestions, so I would go back and take a look and say, and that's when, of course, I found that one question that was totally, and I remember Lynn saying, this, this answer doesn't make sense to this question, and at the time, I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out until I compared the two, the, the printed version and the online version, and I could see that the questions were, were not the same, and when I asked MSBA, they said, yes, we don't think that we can get that fixed in this particular SOI process. So I said, well, what should I answer, the one that's coming out or the one that's online? And they said, no, you should be answering the one that's online. So that made it kind of difficult, I, I think, to, to go back and, um, take a look at. So I, I just want to walk you through this quickly. I know that you've all had a couple of weeks to take a look at it, but I want to walk you through it quickly. Um, I'm going to just go through the pages.
Do we have copies of it?
I think you've got it online. Do, is it not posted online?
Yeah. They have to have a meeting minutes before. What, the meeting?
March 14th, meeting terms?
Yeah.
Is that the, the March 14th one, is that the latest?
Did we post it on March 14th?
The...
The draft?
The draft at that time.
At that time, right. Oh, so...
That is known as one, you've got to go back to that one.
Okay.
Did you email it to them?
Yeah, I thought that I...
Is it on our email?
Yeah, emailed it and asked it not to be posted.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. One, can we take a second and call up our emails?
That's, I'm just thinking that, too. Could you, could you do that, or would it be faster maybe to even, Alita, to post it right now?
No, you can post it, yeah, we can look at that. We just, just take a couple of minutes and just...
Bring it up?
Bring it up. Yep, yep.
So I'll just highlight a couple of the, this key salient points, and where to kind of look and where you, where you don't really have to look. Um, the, there are several sections in here.
Okay, so that was, excuse me, Brooke.
Sorry.
So I, I have a document from March 23rd, is that the latest iteration?
I would say so. The last one that we had sent out, yes, would have been...
Well, SOI draft and meeting packet. So, one of the documents is the SOI draft, yep, so that's an email dated, um, March 23rd. The, um, subject line is warrant, SOI draft and meeting packet, and it's an attachment. Um, okay, so we can see. Has everybody got it?
Yeah, no.
Who wants it? You need help?
I, I can't access my, uh...
You want to scroll over here?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up, I'm blocked from accessing email.
If you just give me two seconds, I'll watch NSD.
All right. Alita, just take a turn, we'll wait through.
Everyone get off her back. Get off her back, everyone.
If you just click on your little, your, the, the school committee, um, you know, your Google circle thingy on the top, then you can add an account and then add yours. Yeah.
I saw that too.
So, do you, do you, you can delete, you can, you just totally sign out.
Just give me a second. Shh, can you give, Alita, time space? Let me get it.
I like that quiet moment, wasn't that nice? I couldn't keep it going, but...
You couldn't, you lost the quiet, hey? How enjoy it, did you not want to? It's so weird.
So Brooke, when do you need to submit this?
April 6th.
So if everybody, if everybody refreshes, it's in the packet now.
Okay, thank you. All right, and now we can refresh.
Thank you, Alita.
See, um, here.
There it is.
Oh, thank you, Alita. Okay, now do we need a couple of minutes to go through?
No, one, just I want to pick up these, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Does anybody have it that we need to look at? If you want, please. I know.
Okay, thank you. So the, you'll scroll through the first couple of pages where it says Math School Building Authority, because that's just general information. Um, and the SOI certification, that's just what we have to check off, so you don't even need to pay attention to that. Go over to the page where it says School District Neshoba, District Contact, and my name is listed there. And the key pieces to pick up there are number five and number seven, because those are the, um, the priorities that we've, that we have chosen. Um, again, I, I know that you've had this in your packets for a couple of different times, so I'm just going to go through quickly. The potential pro, project scope, this is just because you, if there's a drop-down box and you have to pick it up, you don't literally insert this, you just pick up from the drop-down box in there. Um, and then there's just some basic, in, basic questions that have to be answered. I asked that you go over to page five, is, are there page numbers at the bottom there?
Yes, there are.
Thank you. The bottom of page five is where it talks, and this was one of the questions that was problematic. Um, I think, Lynn, this was one of the first ones where you said, this doesn't make sense, and then I, Mark, you had done the same thing. And so this was one of those questions. So basically, the first time it was asking was just simply about the process that we use as a school district for budget process, and then along the way came the fact that, okay, can you, can you tie this in now with how this would work with the MSBA? So the focus on that particular question was looking more at how our budget process works, and so there's a description, um, there. I know that one of the things that Kathy had asked was that I go back and try to remove adjectives, and so I did that. I went back and kind of sliced and diced and took it all. The other thing you need to remember is, many of these boxes, in fact, most of them have character or word numbers that are limits, and so I, and how this, this particular program works is just so bizarre, because you can be typing along and then all of a sudden it just kicks you into another box. So it's not like you can go through and fill it all in and then go back and make corrections, it just literally kicks you out. And then it doesn't save anything, and it just keeps typing, so let's say, whatever the letters are, it just keeps typing the same, same single space, so you don't even know how many words you've lost in the process. It's a, it's such an antiquated piece of software to use, it was very, I found it very, very difficult.
But we love you, MSBA.
At the top of page seven, there's a general brief building history. Again, for somebody relatively new to the district, I kind of relied on others to help, um, to help feed that. Um, and the other thing I would tell you, too, that I did, is I also took a look at what other school districts had previously, um, submitted, and that kind of helped to guide me, too, as to what I really appreciated about some of those and, and what I didn't. I did also try to have MSBA take a quick look at this before we brought it forward, and they chose not to, for obvious reasons, but I did try. But I felt I had gotten enough guidance, honestly, along the way, so I didn't feel uncomfortable with it. Uh, the site description is below, and that's really, basically just saying, are there any other buildings or any other things on that site that would, um, be a hindrance or something that we need to think about as we're looking at doing whatever it is that we end up doing on that, that site? So that's why, um, you see, for example, the bottom thing there, a, a high-pressure Tennessee gas line that runs underground, um, that's something that we kind of need to keep in the back of our mind. Over at the, at the next page, on page eight, there's a description again of the building envelope. Um, have there been major repairs? This was kind of a difficult one for us. Um, I, I think, again, and, and talking to various people, we managed to get, I think, enough information on this. What was difficult was, um, and I know that I had suggested, suggested this as an issue to Chairman R. Moscow, is that we lack records. Of course, everybody around this table understands that we lack records, um, and files in some of our offices when we first came in, and of course, that's problematic. So what I did was, you'll see, in the middle of page eight, say, we have no record on-site of details regarding the above-mentioned project. As a result of major administrative turnover, this current administration has had difficulty in locating appropriate files.
Yep.
I'm just wondering, because most of these are procurement, you've got to go out with bids and everything, I mean, don't we have anything in, in the financial side of it with those records? Like, that we paid money out to a plumber, or we paid money out to a...
But those were the smaller projects, for those, that's not what they're interested in, they're just interested in the really, the big ones. So no, we didn't have anything for like the exterior wall, we, none that we could find, no. So if you take a look at the major projects, the first, and here I'm going to kind of skip through, the first is exterior walls. We really didn't have any major repairs on our exterior walls. Um, and you'll see, too, that I put in a couple of places that NRSD requests that, for example, the roof, that we're asking for the roof in its entirety, because it's not a case of this section or that section or whatever, it was like, no, the roof in its entirety needs to be looked at, not, not just section A, B, or C. So you'll take a look at page nine, for example, just scroll right through that, because we're asking for an entirety, we're not asking for pieces. And you'll see that come through, again, I don't want to waste a lot of time on that. Same thing happens for the window section over on page 10, and then the mechanical section on, um, page 11, and then the boiler section on page 12. So we allude to the major, the major projects, if there were any, but the fact is that we're looking and suggesting that we, we feel that there probably needs to be, um, 100% look, an overarching look at all of this. So then, again, on page 13, you could just scroll past page 13. On page 14 is where it's looking at electrical, electrical services and distribution. The building interior, that was, um, we, we kind of took a look at, because you see, it talks about flooring systems, finishes, ceilings, lighting, and that kind of thing. That's where we, we thought, you know what, we can also put lockers in there, say, because we saw that as part of the finished product as well, we lack lockers so badly up there, so that's in there. Um, that's also the section where we talk about the concerns that we have with regards to ventilation, particularly in our, um, athletic areas and such, and so that's, that's in there. Um, over the page, on page 15, uh, Programs and Operations, here's where it's just asking, gives a brief overview of the high school, and again, keep in mind, you're working within so many characters and so many numbers that you're trying to do. In that section, that's where we talk about the fact that we've got some programs that we feel uncomfortable in offering, um, in terms of the space that's provided. ELL, the library, that means so many needs, the kitchen has issues, of course, the cafeteria has some major issues, so those are kinds of things that are in that section.
Excuse me, Brooke? Um, and I, I can't remember from when I initially looked at this, do, do we, um, reference anything from the MEASC, um, report that was specific to any of these concerns?
No, and when I talked, when I talked to MSBA, their take on it is, we have access to all of that, so we don't need you to reference it, because we will be using that as part of our database to tie it in. Same with anything that would tie in with DESE, they said, don't waste the characters and numbers, or, or words on that, because we have access to all of that.
Okay, because I know the number of these issues are in that report.
No, you're absolutely right.
Oh, yeah, Neil?
It's related to the, uh, the building interior, so where it talks about lighting, um, is anywhere in this, uh, the MSBA made aware that there are many rooms that have zero natural lighting at all?
Yes.
I mean, they're completely closed off, no windows?
We've mentioned that in here a couple of times, yeah. That's a great question.
Okay, any questions at this point, Brooke?
Okay, I'll just continue to push through then. Um, the educational space is the same kind of thing, and that was the other thing that MSBA said is, because I said there were a couple of places where I felt that I was repeating, and they said, no, we expect that you do that, because some of these things should be coming up over and over again. Yours and a lot of it, but there's certainly some of it. Um, and then capacity and utilization, maintenance and capital repair. And Dave's also suggested that, um, we make sure, and we, and we actually alluded to this, that we also submit our capital plans to them, so we, so you'll see in one of these sections that that's exactly what it says, please see the capital plans. Over the page then, then what the, the SOI breaks down into, and I won't go into a lot of details on this, is the priorities. Priority five, it's got several questions about priority five, and then priority seven, several questions on priority seven. And so this is where it tends to start to break it down to a little bit more detail. The leach field is also, it comes up a couple of times, because it makes sense that it comes up a couple of times, so, um, that, that's in there. The ventilation issues come up several times, wastewater comes up several times, security comes up a couple of times, um, general status of the fans, compressors, and pumps comes up several times, roof leaks come up several times. Um, parking is just alluded to quickly, because of that, that we don't see that as something that's driving this, it's more the condition of the building. Then over the page on priority five, there, you can see the couple of questions, I won't go into a lot of details on this, but you'll see that there are several questions that are linked to priority five, and I know that you've read all this anyway. And then you go on to priority seven, um, and the questions that are specific to priority seven, and there are, you know, very specific questions as it ties in. And there is some tie-in between the two, and so when you go over to, um, you'll see that there's a voting, um, a page, a required form of vote to submit, uh, an SOI, and this is after you take the, the vote to, to do the submission, then there's a sheet with very specific language in it that says, yeah, we, we've taken this vote, and it basically says, in a nutshell, what are your priorities, and it asks that you list the very same priorities that you've listed in here, which I... And it asks that you list the very same priorities that you've listed in here, which I did, priority five and priority seven. And it said, but when I talked to MSBA, I said, "Do I need to do like another essay, report-type thing on that?" They said, "No, all we want is like a sentence or a clause." And so, that's what I did. So, for priority five, I, you know, my one sentence there was, "Much of the building experiences sections that are beyond life expectancy standards are in need of full replacement." And then, five, I basically allude to the same sort of rationale that has been listed above. So, that's how I adopt that. This has had many, many eyes on it. I'm not sure what else I can do from here. I'm hoping that you will feel comfortable to take the vote tonight so that I can drive it to Boston. If that's, I really want to make sure that it lands right where it needs to be.
I'm just wondering, did the high school not do energy audits over the summer? Because I know that the schools had students from Minuteman come in here with the energy audit, and they had grants from it.
I don't, I don't recall. I certainly am not aware of it.
Not that I'm aware of. Any other questions for Brooke? Neil.
So, does a representative, once this is turned in, does anyone from MSBA actually come out and view this item themselves?
Oh, yes.
Before the determination?
I don't have an answer on that, but I would say, my first reaction is yes, but I don't know that I have. Lynn might, you might be able to answer that, but I'm pretty sure that they do.
Lorraine? Lorraine?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for Brooke?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, so, my understanding is that this, the deadline for submitting this is
April 6.
April 6. And our next school committee meeting is not before that time.
Right.
So, it would seem that we would need to vote on this tonight, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, on page 30, if folks could jump to that.
And actually, what we've done here is, again, this is what we have to do. This is kind of like after you take the vote, so I'm just going to shift this around. We filled it in with our information. Oh, sorry, I'll just do this right over this way. So, you'll see that our information is inserted here as opposed to the empty page on this particular sheet.
Now, does Lorraine have a copy of this?
No, I don't believe she does. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Lorraine was sending you a document, it was coming from Lynn.
Okay, thank you.
If folks could start to read this.
Ninety-eight percent of this is the language we have to use.
Oh, sure.
So, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't want you to think that this is something that we created because it wasn't. We just filled in the blanks.
Yeah, no, yeah, they give you that template, and then
The template is right there that you've seen in your package before.
You're not waiting for me, are you?
Well, we're sending you the document.
Okay, and you need to send me the document, why?
So that you, we're going to vote on it.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, this is, on the last page of the SOI, this is a form that needs to be filled out. What Brooke has handed out to us is the form with the resolution on it with the things that are specific to our school.
Got it. Does that need to be read out loud and voted on?
We can certainly do that if you'd like. I'm happy to do that. I don't think it needs, I don't think that needs to be, but it's quite long, but I'm happy to do that.
It may because
No, no.
Wait, 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 wait. Neil, what?
It may because Lorraine is on audio, and I know she has a copy.
Yeah.
But because she's on audio, everything is being conducted audio.
Okay. Lorraine, did you have some comment you wanted to make or something to say?
The only question I have is, there must be some formal language that we have to use in order to make
It is, and that's what Brooke was saying. It's in, it's contained in the document. Steve?
In the certification.
Yes, we're going to read, yeah. Steve, anything?
Okay.
Mark?
No.
Susan? Elise?
No.
Okay, all right, Brooke. And you're loud and proud.
Want to read the whole thing?
Please.
Okay. So, this is, again, this is language taken directly from MSBA. It says, "Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March 28, 2018, prior to the closing date, the Neshoba Regional School District of Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Mass School Building Authority the statement of interest dated March 28, 2018, for Neshoba Regional High School located at 12 Green Road, Bolton, Massachusetts, 01740, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Much of the building experiences sections that are beyond life expectancy standards are in, are in need of full replacement. Priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements for the same rationale as provided in priority five. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority." The certification section says the following. "The undersigned hereby certifies that to the best of his or her knowledge, information, and belief, the statements and information contained in the statement of interest and attached here too are true and accurate, and that the statement of interest has been prepared under the direction of the direct district school committee, and the undersigned is duly authorized to submit the statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The undersigned also hereby acknowledges and agrees to provide the Massachusetts School Building Authority, upon request by the authority, any additional information relating to the statement of interest that may be required by the authority."
Okay, any questions?
So, if someone needs to move that.
Okay.
And then, if someone needs to second it.
Okay, excuse me. Susan?
I'm sorry. Does it matter that it says that we have voted in this?
Well, that's why I'm saying, that's why you need to take a vote first, and this comes after that.
This certifies the vote.
That's right.
That we voted. So, would someone like to move that we submit this SOI to the Massachusetts School Building Authority?
Yeah, you're authorizing the superintendent to submit.
Authorizing the superintendent to submit.
Submit.
Do you have the motion?
I do. Otherwise, the administration just submit an SOI for the Neshoba Regional High School to the MSBA.
Okay, Mark, did you want to move?
Sure, I move that the school committee authorize the administration to submit a leaded statement of interest with Massachusetts School Building Authority, and further authorizes the superintendent and the school committee chair to certify that the vote has been taken, authorizing the submission.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Lorraine?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Lynn?
Yeah.
Elise?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thanks.
All right, so, so now, we have OPEB parameters for acceptance recommendation from Budget and Warrant Subcommittee. Is that you, or is that?
No, I think that's Budget and Warrant, actually, that will speak to that.
Yeah, so, we actually discussed, so, part of what we were asked to do a couple meetings ago, I think it was, or meetings ago, was to go back and actually looking to and answer any questions that anyone had on the idea of forming a trust with a single trustee or a group of trustees. And so, after receiving a couple of questions for clarification with regard to the, not here today, but the school committee, school district treasurer, Vicki, whether or not she currently handles dealing with some fiduciary relationship with outside organizations, and she does in fact do that, and she has been doing that for years. So, we came to the conclusion through a unanimous vote that we would recommend that the treasurer in fact become the trustee of the OPEB trust. And that would be reported out, just like the other elements are on an annual basis, so we would actually know what's going on with regard to where, where OPEB is and how it's going to work.
All right, so, to summarize what Neil said, that the Budget and Warrant Committee moved to recommend to the school committee that we assign the district treasurer to act as custodian of the OPEB trust. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect? Mark?
Sure, I move that the treasurer of the regional school district be appointed the custodian of the other post-employee benefit trust, and act on behalf of the district and the school committee in that agency, in that, in that role.
Thank you.
Second.
Neil, second? Any further discussion, questions?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee, and Dan Gottesman, if you're listening to this, we finally did it. Really, really love that you guys got this done. I do think it's important that the people understand that the treasurer of the school district technically is a responsibility of the school committee. So, if there's any question about oversight, I think it's important that people understand that distinction, and that is the control that's already in place. So, I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you, Lorraine.
And I could comment.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
One of the reasons the Budget and Warrant Committee was desiring to recommend the treasurer is that there's some doubt about the ability of the school district to be able to round up active and interested individuals that would be acting as trustees in the manner that we hope and wish, since we already have numerous committees and subcommittees already. And it was thought best that the officer that we already have is a member of the school district, the treasurer is the best person to report back to the school committee about this activity.
Okay. Thank you. We didn't vote yet, right?
No, no.
I got another question.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Is this additional effort going to impact either the treasurer's day-to-day responsibilities or compensation?
I'll speak to that, Pat, although, if you want to jump in. I don't see this as being something major. I don't think that we have talked about any additional compensation for the treasurer. I think this will just fall under her purview now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Okay, roll call vote. Want to read the motion one more time?
Authorized, appoint the treasurer of the Neshoba Regional District to be appointed as the trustee of the OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits.
Thank you.
Custodian is the word.
Custodian of the trust. Thank you. Okay. Roll call vote. Lorraine?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Lynn?
No.
Elise?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Okay, so, it passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the subcommittee reports, Budget and Warrant. Neil?
I'm going to hand that one over to Mark or Kathy. I was not here this morning.
We weren't either, or I wasn't.
There's no meeting.
Okay. You guys said twice last week, I mean, and we did the OPEB thing. What about Wednesday? Anything from last Wednesday?
No, we talked basically about the budget book and taking a look at that, so I'm interested in seeing how that sort of morphed, and the importance of keeping relevant information in the budget book that's easy to understand.
I think it's looking really nice. I think you'll be pleased with it.
Thank you. Personnel Subcommittee. Our last meeting was on March 19th or 20th was the last week. And we have been talking to the superintendent about a job description for the assistant superintendent's position. There were additional suggestions for edits. So, we have another PSC meeting on Monday where we hope to finalize the description and bring a recommendation forward to the school committee. Also, at our next meeting, the PSC, where we do the superintendent's self-evaluation, and you will be getting a draft of that before we have our superintendent's evaluation workshop on April 11. Earlier in the year, everyone was given the, some handouts about the evaluation system and the roomwork and Brooke's goals. We will be, I will be resending those to folks to look at before the 11th, and then, I'll work with the leaders so that folks have a hard copy on the 11th. And again, the budget workshop will be from 5:00 to 6:00 before the regularly scheduled school committee. And I think that's it. Lynn, is that it? Okay, Lynn, uh, no, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Anything else from PSC?
No, I want to hear Elise.
Okay. All right. All right, Elise, let's hear about CPAC.
Sure. Thanks. Since Lorraine is so eager. CPAC met last week, and they have their annual elections. So, CPAC has two new chairs, co-chairs. Kimberly Carn and Frances Morgan will be serving as co-chairs of CPAC going forward. They also wanted me to make sure that I announced, because there's a couple events coming up, CPAC events and Best Buddies and sort of disability community events. So, I apologize, I've got them on my phone, I could have just zoomed in a little because I can't see them. The first one is April, if you're not aware, is Autism Awareness Month, and so, there's a Light It Up Blue event. And this is being sponsored and funded by Kevin and Melissa Whalen. And the whole sort of month is various places around the world, light up and show things blue. But specifically on Tuesday, April 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., the exterior of the Stowe Community Center will be lit up in blue in honor of Light It Up Blue. The next event that's coming up is presented by Neshoba Best Buddies, and it's the Best Buddies Carnival, which is a ball with a carnival theme. And there'll be a lot of dancing, games, and carnival-themed activities as Neshoba Best Buddies presents Carnival. It's open to all ages. Tickets are $10 in advance or $15 at the door, and proceeds benefit Best Buddies. And that is Friday, April 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 in the Neshoba High School cafeteria. And the third event is presented by Neshoba CPAC. There's a social skills, curriculum, and supports presentation, and that'll be talking about social skills, skills, and supports preschool through high school, and the activities that Neshoba does to work on those skills. And that will be April 10th at 7:00, and that'll be in the Florence Sawyer Media Center. And you'll get to hear an overview of the programs and the approaches that are used in Neshoba to teach social skills, as well as a chance to participate in some of the activities that the district uses to help kids develop social skills. And all of those events, I ran through them quickly, can be found on the district website on CPAC, or they all will be on the CPAC page, and they'll also be on the CPAC Facebook page.
Super.
And that was it for the meeting. Great.
That's great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, so, correspondence is, has anyone received any correspondence of note? Okay, consent agenda, I'm assuming that any feedback or input from minutes has been submitted? Okay, items for the next agenda.
They're on the calendar.
Yeah, she's got that in front of her, yeah.
Yep. So, planning calendar. So, for April, we're looking at a discussion about recess time. We'll have a high school choral present We'll have a high school choral presentation, the, again, the superintendent's evaluation workshop with Dorothy Presser from NASC. A warrant report discussion, we have a presentation from the high school students, and then at the end of the month, the last one, we will do the superintendent's evaluation. Is there anything else that, Neil?
Yes, so I was wondering if we can get recommended reports from B&amp;W to be put on there.
Okay, so what are recommended, recommended B&amp;W reports for April? Okay, do you have that, Brooke?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for April?
We just, there's some mandatory, like state mandated changes to four policies. It's just a small language addition.
So, policy...
That we approved them today in policy.
So you're going to bring the recommendation forward?
So it's called a policy update, Susan?
Yeah, well, we'll have to vote on them.
Yeah, so do you want that on the 11th or the 25th?
Um, the, as soon as possible.
If we can move it to the 25th, it would be best because we've got Dorothy, and that's going to be a long one, right?
Well, it'll only take us, it'll only take a minute, it's just adding, it's the pregnancy language that has to be...
No, 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 what I meant was Dorothy's presentation, we're going to be...
We're starting at 5:00 on the 11th.
I have a question for Southie, if it's okay.
Wait, 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 let's make a decision about the policy. So Susan, what's, it's just a change in language, and we would get the information, the recommended language or the...
It's literally adding like four words to four policies, and Alita's already got the changes marked up.
Okay, so it won't take long, and we'll get in the head time.
It'll just, yeah, it's state law, so I think we're pretty much...
Can we leave it at the 11th, Lorraine? I think we kind of decided.
Yeah, I don't even think you need to waste your time, we'll just get it on the agenda.
Okay, so Lorraine, did you have something else?
I believe we've got it, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Did you have something else?
Oh, thank you, yes, I do. Susan, where are we with, and this is not to pressure you, it's just because I feel like I don't know where we're at with all the policy review and what we have left and how many sections, if you could just give a quick update?
Yeah, we were supposed to meet with Dorothy today to go over the last section, but she couldn't make it, so we have to reschedule that. And I talked to Alita today about the remaining meetings, there's five more, so it sounds like the 11th is pretty full to go over a section, right?
Well, you know what, is there a smaller section, or we already picked one?
Yes, there are a lot of, a lot of small sections that we can combine.
Yeah.
Or some larger sections that we could just...
So if they're, if they're all done, Susan?
Yeah.
And you can get them to everyone a week before the meeting to give them time, so no, none of us has any excuses not to review them, but we have enough time to review them.
Yeah.
Just throw a few of them at us.
When?
Because it would, for the 11th, unless, and that way, what we could do is take all of the comments that people have, consolidate them, and then have that discussion. And if we need to kick it out, we can, but at least we started the process.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you so much for all that work, you guys.
And then can we also do some on the, on the 25th?
Yeah, we'll fit them in because I think your point is well-taken, we've got so much, and you've done so much work, we might as well get it done.
Okay.
Okay, Lynn, do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, we did. So we accepted this, right?
The SOI?
We did. Well, we know the reading that booked it.
Yes.
So that's accepted, okay, so we'll make sure.
Okay, all set?
Yeah, thank you for checking in.
Okay, so at this point, we will adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting, and I need anyone to move that we go into executive session. Steve?
I have to close that we go, that we adjourn our regular session and go into executive session pursuant to purpose three of Massachusetts General Law 30A, Section 21A 3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Do I have to finish out?
You need to react.
George King, complaint for declaratory and injunctive relief, committee will adjourn in executive session.
And I'd like to add, to include Superintendent Clutchy and the business manager, Pat Narum.
Second.
Roll call, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Are you alone and able to participate?
Yes, I am alone, in the car with you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, Lorraine? Adjourn into executive session?
Yes.
Susan, Steve?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Lynn?
Yeah.
Elise?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a few minutes to regroup.